For the.
Anyway, so we're hoping that it'll last, you know.
Yeah, we're starting.
Your mic's on, please?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll call the planning commission meeting in a quarter here at seven oh one for Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, roll call, please.
Steve Hakenin, Lake Enchantment.
Ms. Ferraro, you go as Ms. Rowley.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Minutes from the previous meeting of August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Did we get those minutes?
Yeah, they were separate.
Okay.
It was when we had, um, the lawyer and staff.
Great.
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, opposed. Now it's time for public comment. Anyone wishing to comment can come forward at this time. The other lady says no.
Actually, I could ask Jason a question, um, because you were doing the survey, right? You've compiled it or, or Eric, I don't.
No, the survey is being compiled by S E H.
Okay. Since the, um, designations were whether or not you were township resident or, you know, from the city or the county or somewhere, can we pull out the comments that just pertain to the city? I am sorry, to township.
Yes, they will be extrapolating that information in the final draft.
But I mean, the actual comments, all of these long ones, because we should be able to tell.
They'll be redacted.
Okay, that would be great to have a list of that.
Yeah, this is kind of the raw data.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, let's move on to six, new business, uh, project update for Renovari Development, purchase option extension, uh, Jason or Eric?
Yeah, so tonight we wanted to go through, um, you know, we didn't have any condition to use permits or site plans, but we felt like getting a little bit long in extending to not getting together, so we thought it'd be a good idea to get together and just go through the projects, uh, that we have and where they're at. And so, uh, at last week's, uh, board meeting, the township board extended for another six months Renovari's option to purchase. Um, as you know, and as far as we know, they're in the process of, uh, finalizing their final P U D. I know that there's also some, uh, challenges with regard to their capital stack and their funding, which they're working out with the, uh, housing authorities at the county level. So as we get more information, we'll continue to provide that to you, but we just wanted you to know that the board extended their option to purchase to accommodate where the projects at, at least with regard to, uh, P U D and site plan review.
I'm curious as to why there were a couple of no votes. No votes, excuse me.
I, I don't know why, but, um, there was some discussion about, we had given them that timeframe and, um, they, um, I maybe would say that people just wanted it to move forward. It wasn't about whether or not we supported housing development, it was about the land purchase. So township is looking to have someone purchase that land. So I, in my brain, I had to separate everybody. I think, I feel everybody on the township board is supportive of workforce housing. The other part was, we are looking to sell that land, and I don't know how long they've been looking to sell that land. All the time I have been on that board, that land has sat vacant.
That's true. Uh, we built the new building starting in two thousand and twelve, so it was, uh, before that or around that time.
So it's been a, I'll call it an off-the-tax-roll property.
Yeah, and I think there's some doubts as to the ability of, of Renovari to pull off the project without actually owning the property. And then I think there was some, uh, commentary made about the site plan, the tightness of the lots, the way the site looks and how it would perform. Um, so all of those, I think, criteria led into some of the nay votes. Uh, regardless, the township board moved forward, uh, and extended that, so we'll let them keep, um, working on it, and hopefully they can come to terms with whatever they need to get done and, and get through our process. And, you know, we all love the concept, there's no doubt about it. Um, you know, I think it was born by this body, and, and so I know that we're supportive of it, but, you know, there's a difference between selling a piece of property outright for a private development to develop it and subsidizing another development for thirty years, um, and not recouping those funds immediately. Um, and my understanding was, um, from the previous township manager, that that property would be sold in order to pay off, uh, these new buildings. And so while it maybe has become more valuable than it was ten years ago, um, and maybe we have that opportunity in the future to maybe ask for a little bit more than what we were willing to sell it to Renovari to, for, um, you know, that, that's another discussion for the board to take on, but, um, you know, we have an agreement in place and we're going to keep moving forward in that direction.
So it, it actually was on the market from, you say, run two thousand and twelve until when did Renovari get bought two years ago?
Right, yeah, we had a couple of real estate contracts out there that were not fruitful.
So nothing happened, and yet because of Renovari, the township has at least recouped or has at least been paid fifty thousand dollars or something.
That's a good point.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask you, is that something wrong with that? It says to consider the extension to October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, but the motion was till April tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Which one's correct?
Uh, that's directly from the draft meeting minutes that were provided by the clerk, so if there's, there may be a typo in there, I just.
There, there was a typo when we got the board package to start with the money.
Agreement extension to October tenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Yeah, it was extended six months from last Wednesday. April is the correct date.
From October tenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, all right, whatever. Just checking.
So it's been, we've been in discussions with Renovari for a year and a half.
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months. So, yes.
And what was their rationale for asking for extension?
They're still working on the funding package and engineering, and they're in the final P U D.
Well, we've pretty much, we've met with them, uh, this body's met with them twice. And, you know, looks good so far from, I think, from a planning commission point of view.
I've got some questions about the designing, but.
You do, yeah, and, you know.
We didn't get everything we wanted. We didn't get the hundred and fifty thousand dollar houses that I was hoping for, but houses under three hundred thousand, so.
So Jason, can you just explain to me, what is the planning commission's role in this project as it stands? So what are we, we're looking at, I'll just use, is it our job to say the roads are correctly spaced? Is it our job to say you need to do something with snow removal, or is it our job to make sure the plan meets our ordinances?
That's precisely it.
Okay, because, because I'm really confused, you know, there's been lots of conversation out there, well, this doesn't, this doesn't have a big enough driveway, or this doesn't have this, or can the fire truck turn? As long as it meets our ordinance.
We shall approve.
We shall approve it, okay. So we don't have, so now I'm going to ask this other question, we don't have a snow removal ordinance?
No.
Right.
But, you know, uh.
I, I understand that, that those are concerns, but it's not this body's role to approve or not approve based on.
Well, you shall show snow storage on a site plan, you know, that's a requirement.
You have to have, uh, uh, things that separate, uh, different zoning with, uh, trees and plantings and stuff like that. That didn't meet that ordinance at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there are issues with that plan that we looked at.
Right, and we did say, well, well, we did.
We haven't seen a revised plan yet, so, you know, that's what we have to see, we have to see the revised plan, does it meet what our ordinance requires, and if it does, I guess we approve it. But until we see that, we have no idea what we're going to do.
So as long as it meets our ordinance, it's not my preference, what I'd like to see, like swing sets and slides, that, that's not part of it, right?
Like, that's right. However, uh, and keep in mind, a planned unit development takes into consideration innovative development that would not be otherwise doable through conventional zoning.
Right, like, for instance, someplace for children to play versus out on the four ninety-two.
Mm-hmm.
That kind of stuff.
Well, the township owns that, owns the park, maybe we could convince the township to invest in putting up a walkway between the development and, uh, Chumwood Park and put some playground equipment in there, or we can get a grant for it, potentially.
Okay, I just wanted to be really clear on that, because I think, I think there's conversation about some of those pieces and.
Your review criteria are spelled out very well in the Plan Unit Development section in Article thirteen, and I would ask you, ahead of them submitting the final, to review those criteria. That is the lateral, uh, discussion that you can have.
Check box.
Right, it's kind of like a special use permit, you can approve, deny, or approve with some conditions, there's a little bit of give and take. Remember, they have to submit in writing, uh, to us that they, uh, will abide by the parameters that we gave them, and they haven't submitted that yet, too, so we'll need.
And I think the, the planning unit development review process, I think there are a lot of subjective things in there. Does it do this, does it do that, does it follow the, you know, the, but not only that, the, the neighborhood that surrounds it, that kind of stuff. So that's a subjective kind of thing for each planning commissioner to say, man, I don't think it does, or it doesn't, so it's not really like a checkmark thing, yes, 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 there, there are things that you can take a look at to see if that, that's something that you would approve based on, you know, how you feel about what that, what the purpose of that whole project is.
Yeah, there's something I read recently about relationships, um, and sometimes you meet somebody that has eighty percent of the qualities that you'd like to maybe settle down with and lacks the twenty percent maybe that you're looking for, and is it worth going to find the other twenty percent, uh, in somebody else to lack the eighty that you found in somebody? So I kind of attribute these kinds of developments to that, like, we, I, I mean, maybe not Eric, but I, you know, I start up here. I mean, my thought process is, is here's the best-case scenario, and here's where they're coming in at, can we get somewhere closer to that? And, and I will always argue on behalf of the township for those kinds of things, and we'll talk about that in our next project that we're working on here.
Well, the other thing that's, uh, somewhat open-ended at, at this point is the, uh, concept of keeping these homes affordable over a period of time. And as Shannon or Jill mentioned last night, some of that will be driven by deep restrictions from the lenders, but then there's also room for input from our township, either through the planning commissioner or through the township board, in terms of how we want to.
Fracture the paper.
Fracture that, so it's the, you know, people just don't move in, get it cheap and then flip it. There's, there's things we can do.
Yeah, in a conventional sale, you don't have to worry about that. You zone it right, you wash your hands of it, and they get to develop whatever they develop on there, and you immediately recoup the benefits of it. This is somewhat of a, let's say, a subsidized project where you have a social need in the community and you're trying to maximize that with partnership and, you know, cross agreements and understandings, and that's, you know, there's, there's, there's a value to that, too, so don't lose track of that.
And the community in my mind is more than market township. The community is huge, even when we're doing our master plan, our neighbors are part of our community, and it's important, and I, I feel it's important that we're all included and we work together. Yeah, so, so I think, I think we have some wonderful opportunities here to turn some things into really positive.
To be continued, right?
Right, yes.
Onward.
Do I remember them saying that they were going to have to find the financing before they came back to us?
It's, 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 excuse me, I'm standing up just because my head hurts, I'm getting replaced soon. Um, it is a, um, it's, it's more of a concern to them than getting through the P U D process. It's absolutely paramount that that occurs, or they don't have a project.
Well, that'll have to happen first, I would assume.
I would assume.
Aye, six B, Michigan Veterans Home, DJ Jake Betty.
Yeah, I'm going to step over just because it's more comfortable, uh, to the TV here. And this is, uh, Jake Betty's conceptual, this is very conceptual, okay? Um, but this is their proposal, and last week, the road commission held a public hearing on the D E M V's request to, at a point just past, heading west up the hill here, past the Fish and Wildlife to drop Metro Drive to the south, have about a twenty-five mile an hour arc there, radius, and then, um, exit out south of where it is now. And from my understanding, that went very well.
I'll clarify what's there.
Yeah, you guys, there was a, a couple of representatives from the township, including, I said Eric. I did not go because my concerns were relayed way ahead of time, and that is, we have curb and gutter, water and sewer, and safe for us to school infrastructure on Metro Drive as it sits now. So that needed to be maintained, and they're willing to do that. Um, if you look over at the image, this is a zoomed in, zoomed in image of this portion of the project, which is to the south. So this property was al, is also part of the purchase agreement, um, from Jim Ross and Tony Scott. They didn't have a particular use for this project, so you see there now says potential public use park area. That was something that Eric and I have been working with them on. You'll also notice, uh, on the campus, there is a potential location for an amphitheater. That was also discussed by us and agreed upon. If you think about it, we are a five oh one C three, they're a five oh one C three, might be a little different, but we're both nonprofits. So that kind of partnership on a grant application, or from my understanding and talking to the leaders of the M V H, they have the ability to really do some fundraising, and did do a great job of it. So those, these two concepts, along with the arrangement, we can get into a little bit more detail about the concept, but, um, those two components were not previously shown on the plan and weren't previously considered by the D M V, but now they are. You'll also see some walking paths through, um, there are a couple of retention ponds that they're thinking about stocking with fish so that the veterans can fish. Staff parking, and you have the three different segments or sectors of housing, along with the visitors area here, you pull in. It, it, it kind of reminds me of an assisted living place, which it most certainly is, but much nicer design than a lot of those types of places. So, yeah, we're really excited about this. Then there's the ability to connect, you know, this piece of property is currently, you know, uh, landlocked, you, you can't get to it unless you do a really long driveway out where Metro is now. So this provides almost direct access to that potential park property. And then there's the ability to maybe connect to Super One Foods or the Westwood Mall, and there's also the ability to connect to the Witten Theater or any of the services that are being offered in our business parks. So, you know, we wanted to make sure, or we still want to make sure, and we hope that you guys put your thinking caps on, too. You probably won't see a site plan, they're doing their due diligence now, so they have an accepted purchase agreement, they're going through their contingencies, uh, they made it through phase one, I guess they don't need to do a phase two, which is really great. Um, and now they're just lining up their funding, which is probably more guaranteed than, than the previous projects we discussed. Um, but these are the things that they're working on now behind the scenes. So don't take this as, as, as the law, this is a conceptual rendering, subject to change, but this is their preferred, um, configuration on the property.
When do you think we'll see a site then? Twenty twenty-five or something?
Probably early in twenty-five, I think, yes, if everything was to continue to track the way it has been. They have some deadlines that they need to meet with their, their federal grant as well.
You mentioned amphitheater, is that an open, like a bandshell, or is that like a closed?
Correct, yeah.
Open.
Open, fair weather.
Size of that parcel?
That's a corrected forty, so it's thirty-seven acres approximately.
I bet you drive close to come out on the other street.
Um, it would be just north of the last home, across from the school. No, 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 the school's way up here, is the, this is the intersection with.
I got you.
Yeah, that's right. So this is the kind of janky crossover by a fast novel here, it would be south of that. Of course, I wanted to try to align it with that, uh, for access management purposes, um, but there's some wetland in that area, so they, they did push it to the south. The, uh, property owner, immediately to the south, I understand, was at the meeting and didn't seem to have too much of a problem. In fact, I think they had a conversation offline after the meeting with that property. So that's all we have for you at this time, but we wanted to keep you apprised of how that's progressing.
I, I would hope that they're going to change the guest parking and put more than fourteen spaces in there. Oh, I see, I must have missed something. Not very much. The other ones are for household parking and staff parking in the back.
Well, this is their third one in the state that they'll be building, so you can welcome to ask them that question, but I think they do have some experience with it, and we can certainly express our concern there. They, they certainly have the room to do it.
I would, I would, if they just keep moving there, but on the outside, I don't know if they'll park, if they'll go on all the way.
Well, you also noticed that there's no parking whatsoever for the proposed outdoor theaters, so, um, that's why it's very conceptual, and I, honestly, I wouldn't, um, I mean, it's neat to look at, and it's exciting to look at, but it's not by any means a site plan seminar.
I would think that'd be part of the grant for the, for the, the grant.
Yeah, and they'll, they'll have to meet our guidelines, too, for parking. None of those things have been contemplated yet.
So Lynn and I did have a conversation with the architect, is that who we talked to the first time?
No, he's the current director of the facility as a design.
So, yeah, mm-hmm, and he seemed supportive of the concepts, but I'm sure that, that's how that works. Um, there are also, are they having parking for their residents who live there?
Yeah, there's staff and then, uh, parking on the back side, you know, closer to the Fish and Wildlife. They're trying to utilize the, um, the, the buildable areas of that site, there are some wetlands on the site, and so they're, they want to use the high ground, which is the main reason for them to relocate.
Okay, six C, US forty-one corridor, native species planting.
Yeah, I'm going to ask, uh, maybe Eric to relay what was discussed at the D D A, but I believe that there were some of the plantings that took to the soils in the test area, and there were also, um, through the Marquette County Soil Conservation, um, or, I'm sorry, Market Conservation District, uh, there were, they found seed that was about half the price that we anticipated, so if it does move forward.
I think the D D A is exploring other areas of the corridor to plant some of that seed. Um, we're going to queue, the D D A chair walks in, so I mean, he might be able to scout a little bit more, but, um, like Jason said, there was some success with the test area, which is the median area right in front of the Chris's Gas Station. Um, I guess, like I said, there, with that success and the cheaper seed next that was located, um, the plan is, with some guidance by the D D A, is to plant that in other areas throughout the corridor.
And then the second part of that, the roundabout island maintenance and plantings, um, there's been some discussion at the D D A level about weeding out that and then planting some wildflowers, perennials in there, um, and, and taking more ownership of them from an aesthetic point of view. So not a lot of detail there, but I know it's something that the D D A is discussing, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. But again, wanted to keep you apprised, that's something that we've been discussing in the office.
So where's the funding coming from? The D D A?
Well, currently, the D D A levies one mil, um, and that could either be extended or expanded upon, depending upon the projects that the D D A deems to be, um, more important than, than the others, so that's something that they'll have to contemplate.
More to talk about in number two with the roundabout, or?
No, just that, you know, I, I think everybody can agree that they're a bit overgrown, they are, they, they can serve as a welcoming feature, we've all seen the one, uh, on Front Street, I think the city does a great job of their plantings along, uh, South Front Street and entering into that Front Street, US forty-one, uh, roundabout, and so we don't need to have carnations, I don't think, we could probably have, uh, wildflowers that would not need much maintenance, uh, that would maybe complement, uh, any of the plantings that we do in the corridor, so.
Does the city plant those or is that a beautification?
They may have a beautification committee, yeah.
Is that who you think does it?
We had one, and then, I don't know what happened to it, but maybe it's time to resurrect that or, or put the feelers out there. You know, this master plan's going to generate a lot of different ideas, and perhaps those, some of those people that are out there paying attention to the master plan update could latch on to some of those ideas, uh, and, and maybe take them on as pet projects, so that's what I'm hoping.
So the beautification committee in Marquette is, um, composed of more people than just people who live in the city of Marquette?
Is that right?
Correct. So maybe, um, maybe we should put a feeler out and see what they would think about helping out.
Or some of the businesses, yeah, I mean, I remember I had a contact, um, I think he moved away now, but, um, Mr. Fink from G F S was also part of the, was it the Knights of Columbus, or one, one of the service groups in town, and they offered, uh, to take one of them on as well, as did the Business Association, they had discussed it at some point, um, being a part of that or at least contributing funding to that, so, you know, some of that stuff's stuff that staff can help organize and, um, but we have to determine that the needs there, and it seems that it is.
Six D, twenty twenty-four road maintenance completion.
Yep, just to let you know that the proposed or the prescribed road maintenance, and Eric can probably talk to this, uh, more than I can, but I, I think the projects are all complete.
Yep, ship seal was complete on Northwoods, which I believe is what we see there, um, and then on Brookton and Brickyard Road this summer.
Four ninety-two received some as well from the county. Four ninety-two received some as well from the county. Five fifty-three, uh, we had a corridor meeting yesterday, and we were discussing trunk lines, um, and how good a shape the trunk lines are in the UP. So trunk lines are like from here to Launce or from Launce to Ironwood, like the the main highway is forty-one, twenty-eight. They're in really good shape, and that's an aside from this discussion, but, um, I guess to go along with that, I provided you with a one sheet, and this is MDOT's proposed projects for twenty twenty-five throughout the region, and then on the backside is their proposed projects from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. So that's just your, for your information, it doesn't really concern us a whole lot. In fact, it doesn't have, we don't have any projects, but that's not surprising because we still have really new roadways through our community as far as the state highway goes. But yeah, it's part of being a planning commission, you get to find out about stuff like that ahead of time usually.
Oh, maybe this is not a state project, but, um, my understanding is M thirty-five from by the state police post to what maybe could be a roundabout is going to be redone next year?
Yeah, there'll be a roundabout at four ninety-two and, um, four ninety-two and thirty-five, yeah.
Look that over. Okay, yeah, I I hear it's starting next year.
Yep.
I know, you had to look like, I couldn't, I didn't see it either, Jim.
It's on the, the age of twenty-six through twenty-thirty work schedule. The green text on, kind of in the right hand corner.
So, so that's what I'm hearing, so whether or not it's not until twenty-six, um, maybe preliminary work starts before that happens.
Yeah, that'll be a welcome project, that's a, it's a hairy intersection sometimes. But yeah, our road projects have been done, uh, and complete, and, um, I know Eric will be working with the road committee on generating the next, uh, round of, uh, throughout the winter. Hopefully, we get him off the bid early so that we can get, uh, on board with the county's, uh, projects and.
I would assume we'll do it the same way for this upcoming year, but this year, we, the county submitted the bids for us in conjunction with their jobs for all other townships in the county just to get an economies of scale advantage on that. So I assume that's the way we would do it again this year, um, if we get more pay for our buck. Um, so I'll be obviously in touch with them and working with the road committee to kind of hold up that list.
Trying to figure out what the difference is between, uh, red and green.
It'd be the years, all the green, all the green, whether twenty-six, red is twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And then blue is twenty-nine.
That would be.
That's correct.
Six E, MDOT TAP grant, non-motorized pathway project.
Yes, so this is due to be constructed next year. If you remember, this has been on the, in the hopper for a while, um, but it's gonna come to fruition next year, probably starting with the, uh, Commerce Drive portion, and, uh, that's just simply tying in a pathway from US forty-one to Warner Street, uh, which then, uh, on the other side, on Wright Street, it'll go from, uh, Discount Tire up to Venture, wherever Venture lands, okay? So that is gonna be in in flux until that project is sorted out, but nonetheless, it will connect to North Star Academy in some fashion, and Venture Drive. So if, um, let's say if Venture Drive gets relocated to the south and it comes out, you can see right here drops down and it comes out right here, then you'll have pathway up to here, and then another pathway up to North Star. So that continues, that's it.
So pathway meaning like we have today?
Separated pathway, yeah.
So, so that, yeah.
Well, actually, no, it'll be like the maintenance strip, wh- which we call, and I certainly call pathway.
Maintenance strip, so there won't be a barrier like that?
It won't be separated, unfortunately, yeah. But it's sufficed for the TAP grant that we received, and it's sufficed for Seafrost School Pathway. Is it ideal? No, but did we get it done? Yes.
No, so not.
No.
Six F, property maintenance.
I'll turn this one over to Eric.
Yep, so I, Jason, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I do believe we provided Roger with the draft blight ordinance?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Um, and then as far as kind of specific cases, uh, seven sixty Lake Enchantment, that agreement was entered with the court. Forty-five days expiration will be October thirty-first, so on November first, I will be out there with the sheriff's deputy, um, to inspect, and we will go from there.
Big truck. Big truck, it's worse.
Yeah.
Worse. Um, as far as the property along County Road five fifty, um, going to Big Bay, we've been in contact with the DNR and Eagle. Um, we are currently waiting for our process of letters to get to the point where we can issue a citation, at which point Eagle and DNR will be, I guess, working with us in some capacity at a higher level than we're able to. Um, we anticipate that that will get to that level due to the lack of response that we've received so far.
Lack of response from the property owner, just history of inaction. Um, well, not inaction at the property, because there's certainly action, just the wrong type of action. Um, but yeah.
What's the address of that property?
Five seven one, I believe, don't quote me on that, but I think it's five seven one County Road five fifty. Yep.
Is there any action?
We need an address or name.
Find it again, I don't know. You think they were, uh, the next step was they were gonna be ticketed?
Oh, on direct?
Direct.
Yeah.
That was impressive.
That's, yeah, that's one that I, I, neighbors might say otherwise, but that is one where I occasionally drive by and I do see some progress. I know that there's still junk vehicles, and there's a fridge, and there's other stuff there, but I do see some progress, um, and I I I kind of take what I can get on that one. Um, but yeah, next step is a ticket. We'll probably.
Yeah, I'm asked about that often, so.
I don't know.
As you are too. I'm sure, yeah, give them your number. Hmm, a- again, you know, this whole blight thing in our area is that sometimes if there's an opportunity as a neighbor to offer to those people that you could move their stuff, but I don't know. I don't know how to make this work better.
Right, I need you.
We hand out a sheet with our letters that says, here's who picks up this, here's who will take that. So we're not just sending nasty grams, we are trying to give people the resources to clean up their property. They have to be willing to do it. Uh, we we, you know, I don't have it in my budget to just start cleaning up Trailbridge, um, neither does the township board. The only thing that we can do, and I think what Roger's working on for us, is having that ability to assess taxes on the tax roll if if there's no action, and we go in and clean it up, uh, and we utilize a a contractor of our of our choice, so. Um, that's what we're working on, and we're hoping to get that to you, um, you know, before the end of the year, something something solid by the end of the year.
That's when we are expecting Roger to get the blight ordinance?
That's conservative, yeah, I mean, I'm trying to give him some time to provide us with some context in a in a draft, have you guys chew on it a little bit, and if there's any comments, it'll go back and forth one more time, and then we get to a public hearing, which we need to do as well with any ordinance or or if it's a police ordinance and it goes to the board, then they have their own protocol to follow, but, yeah, we want to make sure we do it the right way.
I don't remember in that property maintenance ordinance if there was anything that was addressed in cars for sale, was cars for sale in those yards?
No, I don't think there is, not specifically for. I do have a problem with one of the lines in there, and it, it it, it's something to the effect that, um, it should limit, well, I don't know if it should, but in my opinion, one, you should have one, be able to have, let's say you have a project car, one unlicensed, unregistered, uninsured, inoperable vehicle. But keep in mind, major repairs of that vehicle should occur inside. So, um, that's one line that, I made a comment to Roger about that the other day, so he's gonna look into that. Um, that's the way the current property maintenance ordinance reads, but that's not the current, uh, blight ordinance, uh, the way that it reads in the draft. So, that, you know, we all have our own little comments that we make, and he's gonna put all that together and get us something back that is is a workable document.
I don't know if, you know, is, um, four ninety-two there already to do that?
They're close to the right of way, yeah, yeah.
So that apartment though?
He's pretty close to the right of way, I don't know if he's in it or not, but yeah, I mean, there's nothing against somebody putting a car out for sale. I mean, unless it's in the corridor, that's a little bit different, um, unless it's, belongs to that property. There's something in the, I think, asset access management, um, language that prohibits that. It's the township, it's not the city, I don't think even in the city they prohibit something like that, unless it's in the right of way or on the sidewalk or something, that's probably.
Six G, twenty-four, community service results.
Yeah, I don't want to get into the weeds on this, this is more homework for you guys for our next meeting, um, lots of interesting, uh, and I would advise you, I, we included it in the packet, but I would advise you to look at it on a computer because that way you can zoom in on PDFs, it's very small print on there. But obviously, there are some themes, um, that we were able to glean from that, and I would just ask you to, um, I I believe we'll have SEH president at our next meeting, or at least starting to give us chapters, the sections of the the plan update, um, where some of these topics will be discussed. But certainly, when you look at capital improvement programs and things like that, you know, splash pad jumps out at me quite a bit, um, pickleball trails, um, property maintenance was mentioned a few times. Dog park was in there quite a bit, so yeah, just take a look at it, we want to do it, get you a hard copy of it so that you can make your notes and whatnot, so you might need a magnifying glass on some of that. I know that I would need another point five on my glasses to see some of that, but, um, yeah, just take a look at it and be aware of it so that when SEH comes back to us and starts discussing the next steps in the master plan process, that you're aware of what the residents are saying.
So, so my comment is that, um, I think we had a really good turnout of people filling out the survey.
Yeah, we did.
And I, um.
Statistically relevant.
Mhm, mhm, and I did bring survey bookmarks to our local store twice. Um, so the first batch was all gone, and then the second batch was there.
Yeah, Andrew was handing them out like candy at the, uh, at the front desk, everybody that came through, and, uh, thanks to the planning commissioners who also, uh, made others aware, I know that we put it on social media, we utilized Denny's idea and got on the radio and got on TV, and, um.
Yeah, I missed you.
Well.
Did you?
Wasn't hard, wasn't a major story, breaking news or.
Were you on, uh, Mike settles or you up, what's up, or?
No, it was just a small spot, um, eighty-six.
Called it?
They send somebody different every time they come and talk to me, so I feel like I have to educate all of them. Except for Jerry Tudor, he's really great.
There also is out there still, still open and active, a business survey. It's not officially part of this community survey, it's had its own questions directly targeted towards business owners, so that's still out there and open. Um, last night I heard we had something like twenty-five results, it might not be statistically relevant, uh, but there is some more comments, I guess, coming from the business community, uh, so we'll include those in our future meeting once that survey is closed.
Yeah.
I thought it was a great response, and I think the comments are relevant.
Yeah, nothing earth shattering either, I mean, those are kind of some of the things we.
And it is a great place to live.
Oh, uh, Jason, one thing, I, I didn't, I wasn't at the last meeting, my English meeting, but I I viewed the tape, and I noted that our chairman, uh, asked Roger Zappa whether or not the steering committee should get a public notice, and Roger advised that because three members of the planning commission were present, we should hopefully notice it. When I attended the steering committee last week, uh, I raised this topic, but it wasn't answered, so did we send out a notice for that?
I don't, I think we noticed it on the front door and on the calendar, but, uh, we, I mean, that's typically what we would do. We put it online, we put it on the front door, and, um, I mean, we're not putting it in the mining journal or anything.
Oh, well, that's, okay, so then I just misunderstood what what Roger said, that it didn't have to be noticed?
It does have to be noticed, but it's not like a public hearing.
I see, I see, okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and it requires a minimum of, uh, twenty-four hours. In an emergency situation, I think it's what, eighteen, right?
Fifteen, yeah.
But they're all scheduled, so we'll know to get to next one, I'll tell you.
Can we call right offhand how many we received, um, except the last master plans? I'll see when we have respondents.
See if it's in our appendix. Give me a second here, and I can see if it's included. I just, I just think it's kind of low for the amount of people in the township.
Five hundred? Five hundred is one quarter of our.
No, there are only two hundred and forty for people who've lived in the township.
Who completed the whole survey. So some people stopped answering because there were lots of questions.
One on one quarter would be an eighth, yeah.
Oh, I thought it said that somewhere.
Two hundred and forty respondents from the township.
What are you looking at?
That second paragraph.
I mean, where though?
On the back of the, on the back of the sheet, yeah, back of the first.
It says.
Doesn't really address how many in the township completed or didn't complete.
Oh, they just say that in the top part.
We can get you that information, but it it was more respondents than we've had the last time you asked, yeah. And I think a lot of that has to do with social media, just, you know, availability of, um, access to this information is improved, along with our website, which is improved. And for those who are watching or paying attention, we do have a fully dedicated page to the master plan that's right on the front page, or clickable off the front page of our, um, of our website, market township dot org.
It has to be the fact that only forty-eight percent came from like a township residents and fifty-two from outside the township. Also, kind of would like to see more.
Better than not getting any.
I know, I know. Okay, uh, no unfinished business. And local committee correspondence from August sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, just minutes there for your, for your.
Uh, I mean, almost four people.
So the township board met on October ninth, last Wednesday. Or no, I'm sorry, that's tonight, right? The township, Billy, yeah, anyways, we met, um, there wasn't a lot of discussion about things and Jason did pipe in and give the planning commission information.
I'm sorry, we were.
You did talk about the planning commission last.
Yes, I provide an update to the township board from our department on the second board meeting of each one.
So if you have things that you wanted to share, that would be the time. Um, we did talk about our meeting where we will be, um, where do I have to find it? Here it is. Uh, the budget work session, so this is maybe of interest to all of you, we had a discussion about what date works best and we decided to do it all in one day. So on Friday, November eighth, um, starting at nine in the morning, we're going to meet here to discuss the budget and we're going to keep going till we're done. Okay? So I did note that we have not seen the capital improvement projects yet, but I'm guessing we'll see them at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Because we should see them before the budget work session.
Which is, yeah, starting, uh, later in the month.
November eighth.
Yep.
Okay, so that will be something on the next agenda. Um, I also had the opportunity to attend a conference put on by the MTA Association at Northern, as did Carl and Lynn and Eric, were you there? No, Eric went to the road commission meeting. So I do have the handouts from those sessions, and one of the things that I listened in on and I, um, have not been following is that if you are communicating about township things and there's a FOIA request and you're using your own personal email, this person felt, the presenter felt, that they could, um, access your personal email, so the encouragement there was to use the township email that you have been given. Now, I don't know if the planning commissioners have township email. But it may be something we want to think about, otherwise they're going to go to your, they could potentially go to your personal email to do FOIA. And they also said something else that was quite interesting, that if you have cameras looking down, so you know how we put cameras everywhere in our world now, that if that camera is looking down and you're paying with a check, that camera can potentially drill all the way down to that check information, that would be, um, that would be a problem, maybe, potential problem again. They felt that could be a FOIA request as well. So we really need to make sure our cameras are positioned, so they can't drill down to a personal information. Those were the things I got out of it. Um, I, I intentionally wanted to go hear about the updates, what's going on in, um, our Congress in Michigan, um, and so I do have that handout. I was, I didn't learn anything I didn't already know or had heard by just following the news, but, um, I don't know what Lynn felt about that, but, um, the networking is always the best part, I have to say, yeah, so I met some people who were here for that, so it's a legislative lowdown, it's called. They're not really meeting very much. So lame duck might be when we see some things happening, um, so I'm not sure, so just keep watching your news, hope that goes.
How was lunch?
Uh, lunch was okay. Yeah, Billy. Yeah, it was okay. Northern always does a nice job, you know, Billy. It was salad, yeah. I, I don't know if Lynn has anything else to add from that. But I can put these handouts in my mailbox and you're welcome to take them out and look at them, or I can pass them down, or I don't know that they put their handouts online on the MTA site, so you could look there. Other thing is Lynn and I have been talking about doing a Friday, um, I guess I would call it a lunch and learn or just a learning session. We have access to MTA education in services and, um, you can go through the catalog and pick one and let people know we're going to do it on that Friday at noon and, uh, you're welcome to come and listen, it's only an hour, right? We'll put them on the big screen TVs and might be of interest. So watch for that in November, right? We'll get it by November, we'll get it together, but.
Oh, uh, Linda, your, uh, your mention of the MTA, as I mentioned, reminded me of the MTA model, uh, Creo, uh, comprehensive renewable energy.
You talked about that. Do you want that handled?
Uh, I have, we've already got that and we've already approved it and sent it to Roger Zappa. I guess my question is, where is that at this point, is it still on Zappa's desk? Have we gone to the township? What, what do we?
I'll update you on that under the.
Oh, you're going to talk about that?
Briefly.
Here's the. They're all different, Jim.
All different.
Yeah, so you'll have to share them or make copies.
So I've got a question about the budget process, seems to me last year we were involved in this way ahead of time versus having the budget, budget termination on November eighth, that when the budget's going to be set?
No.
No?
It's going to be discussed.
First, the first meeting on it is November eighth.
Okay, so this is when they come up with the.
So you'll get your CIP at the next meeting and it's going to look a lot like last year's CIP, I would imagine.
So this is not what they're asking for now? On November eighth, I mean, what, what are they going to do on November eighth?
November eighth is the first meeting on the general budget, I believe.
Okay, so we're going to get the CIP stuff the next, our next meeting then?
Yes.
Okay.
From department heads.
Uh, Rec, committee report?
Rec, we'll meet next Tuesday, uh, we will share with them that the pickleball court is complete and we'll also share with them, uh, the results of the community survey.
The ball court is completely, the Lions.
Lionsfield court has been completely resurfaced. Check it out, it's really nice.
We can play on it now.
Yes. You can play on there tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Uh, both committee report?
The road committee met last week, uh, we discussed the Michigan entrance home, in specific, the road realignment, or so, uh, proposed road realignment, and we also discussed our meeting schedule for the upcoming twenty twenty-five year.
Who's on?
I met with Roger Zappa regarding the Creo ordinance. Uh, we both agreed that it would be part of the zoning ordinance and not a standalone ordinance. So my, uh, next week or so will be drafting that into our ordinance somehow. He did indicate that the legislation is written very poorly, there's no precedent set, service commission has not provided their criteria yet, and that may also change things. Uh, we agreed to take a tact of being as restrictive as possible without going above and beyond what the state requires. Um, but also without there being any precedent set. We're going to make it a conservative document. Uh, it'll go into Article sixteen, detailed use regulations. I will assimilate that language and get it to him, you guys may not see it until our meeting in November, in which we'd have to have a public hearing probably. The state legislation takes effect on November twenty-eighth, I believe it is. And although we don't have any pending projects, it would be who of us to get that on the books as soon as possible. Uh, and to update you, uh, last survey in two thousand and eighteen, two hundred and forty-eight had completed the survey. I mean, two hundred and forty-eight, it's right here, master plan, under the public input, uh, chapter six.
Two hundred and forty-eight township presidents? So literally the same number?
Very close, yes.
And how did they come up with that statistical significance, I'm kind of curious about that? I mean, you know, you know, I study statistics, I just got curious. Ninety-five percent confidence, twenty-four hundred, twenty-one hundred, two hundred and forty people out of how many, eight thousand, six thousand in township? They tell up with that.
At that time, there's thirty-nine oh five, we now have forty-one oh six. Forty-one oh five.
Twelve percent?
Yeah, it was a plus minus a six back then.
Okay, so, and they're saying with ninety-five percent confidence, that's what the rest of the township feels?
Are those there any roots about rumor or, or blind colors after western walls or something?
Not to our knowledge.
That's in the works, I'm just trying to, some more about it.
Potentially, hopefully.
Hey, anything else?
Yeah, there's, I don't mean to sound aloof, but there's certain things I can't discuss.
Oh, true.
But it looks good, it's favorable, it's going to be positive for the community. As long as we can keep in line with our events, I'll say that. Announcements. I will likely be getting hip surgery, not that it's a big deal, I'm quite glad I done, um, I thought it was going to be later, but I contacted another doctor, it might be worse. My quality life has been in a tank. Uh, so I may be, I mean, it may be only a few days or maybe a week, I don't know. We made that to staff today. Available two thousand eight, so I'm hoping to get it maybe by then.
That's wishes.
Have you walked in the same day?
Uh, yeah, I hear the procedure's like an hour long.
One of the guys at work just had it done.
Yeah, not a big deal.
No, he was thrilled.
Getting your nails done. An hour long.
Uh, additional comments by planning commissioners?
I'm good.
Good for right now.
Nothing either. Do you adjourn the date of war?